Down to zero, so it doesn't screw up the meeting room. And then the next time I go on a Zoom call, I can't hear anything. Can't remember why. That's you. That works, that works. I don't know why my video is not coming through. Yeah. I can't see that.
So that, like when I.
Sure, start here it is. I had to wait for Frank, I think.
What's that?
I just, I sent you a request.
Bring you up as a panelist?
It was good, but when I did that.
I was trying to figure out where my video was. Okay.
I'm ready when you're ready.
Are you ready?
Somebody has their sound on.
Down that end.
No. It's not me.
I'll check again.
It may have been me. I think I, I think it was me.
Okay.
Sorry. Who was you?
It used to take us a lot longer to do this, like six months ago. We're getting fast.
Right.
Just let me know when you're set.
I am set.
Okay.
I've been set.
Mike, are we ready?
Ready at seven o'clock.
Okay. We'll begin then. Welcome, everybody. This is the Board, Select Board meeting. I'm starting to learn what our name is for June 6th, 2023. And we want everybody to know that we're video recording, as we usually do. And we want to take a moment at the beginning to give our appreciation for our troops who are serving around the globe in defense of our country. So please join me in doing that. Thank you very much. Our first appointment is with Chief Carrico, Fire Chief, to provide a quarterly update. Welcome, Chief. Thank you for coming.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm getting old, so I need to use my glasses.
Don't we all?
All right, for the next hour, we'll talk.
Gus can probably keep you here that long.
You have to wait for my questions, though, Chief.
Oh, yeah. So basically, I'm just going to give you a snapshot of what's happened in the fiscal year. One thousand three hundred and thirty-two incidents, sixty-seven second medicals, two third medicals, five hundred and ninety-four ALS calls, which brought in about four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Two hundred and three BLS calls have brought in one hundred and fifty-five thousand. We've received mutual aid fifty-four times, given mutual aid ninety-nine times. If you remember, back before we went ALS, we were receivers of mutual aid, much more than we gave mutual aid. So we're heading in the right direction. So far, we've had one hundred and eighty-seven box alarms, which is an average of six point nine members per box alarm.
What's a box alarm?
A box alarm is when I have multiple medicals, or I have a fire, or I have some kind of incident that requires more than three people to mitigate the incident. So it could be a brush fire, it could be a mutual aid engine call, it could be second medicals, severe MVC.
Yeah, so you need to get more people into the.
Hopefully, we'll get more people back. That's what we're trying to do. Yep. For the full-time response rate on box alarms, I have two members that are nine to eighteen percent, and then I have ten that are less than two percent. And majority of that is because a lot of the full-time employees do not live close enough to participate in box alarms. Of the call force, I have four members who are fifty-four to seventy-seven percent. They come back fifty-four to seventy-four percent of the time. Three members that are twenty-five to thirty-five percent. Five call members from ten to twenty, and I have two that have a response rate of one percent or less. For apparatus, car three has been dispatched one thousand twenty-three times, and A1 has responded nine hundred and nine times. One of the things I looked at today, it's the most common injuries in Medfield, which is falls, one hundred and thirty-seven times, and then injuries from motor vehicle crashes, which is thirty-eight times.
So nine hundred some is like two to three a day?
It's, you know, with, with thirteen hundred calls a year, it, it's pretty much, it, but it's never spread out like that, because that would be manageable. If I could predict calls, I'd be making millions of dollars and doing another job. But it's, it's just, it's, there's no rhyme or reason to the calls. You could have a perfect day, beautiful day out, and we're going nonstop, and then you have this horrible weather and, you know, we don't turn a wheel. So it's just crazy. And it's the opposite, too. It's beautiful out and we go crazy, so it's. Just most recently, last Friday, when those thunderstorms rolled through, we were providing an engine to cover the town of Franklin at their main headquarters, and we had an engine at a three-alarm fire in Medway. And we had some people back here that were covering the town with an ALS ambulance. So with that, that's basically our snapshot of what's happening. It's, I guess when my world is uneventful, I think that's a good thing. So I'm open to your questions.
Gus, you want to start? I just asked my, my, my question, when you first started, I had a question, and I'm trying to remember what it was. The, oh, I know what it was. The growth, I was just curious, when you had the total calls, I think it was thirteen hundred.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Yeah.
I was just curious how that compared to the year before.
Well, we typically run about fourteen hundred calls. So I, you know, with the months that we have remaining, I, I want to say the last time I looked, we were about sixty calls ahead of last year.
Okay.
But you can't gauge that going into the next couple of months, because it could go up and down. You know, all of a sudden, we get a, say if we get a severe winter and we're running a lot of, you know, weather calls, or if all of a sudden, everybody gets well, and they're not calling us as much, then that number will go down.
And there's no, no new trends in the nature of the calls in terms of?
No, no, I was just surprised at the amount of falls that we have.
Yeah.
Which is, but it's not surprising. It's a majority of the senior population that we have. You know, as we get older, we have a tendency to lose our balance more, so. And then it, you know, I was even looking at some other statistics this morning. And like the top two medications that we give are Zofran and Fentanyl. So obviously, you give Zofran for somebody who's nauseous, and it takes away the nausea. And then Fentanyl causes nausea, so we, you have to give Zofran. So, you know, you're giving Fentanyl for pain management, you're giving it for cardiac issues or chest pain or something like that, so. It was just interesting to see that. I was surprised that saline wasn't number one, but it just didn't pop up on the list.
That answers your question from a couple of weeks ago about when you were worrying why we went through so much Fentanyl.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to manage medication shortages, just like when you see a medication shortage on the news. You know, it's a trickle-down effect, because, you know, pre-hospital EMS does use a lot of saline. We use a lot of, you know, we, we carry a box full of medication in both ambulances now. And I also want to mention one thing that happened today. Captain DeKing went on a medical call. It was an ALS medical, and a second medical came in, so they put a box alarm to activate A2. Captain DeKing made a great decision by splitting up the two paramedics, because the call that he was on, he was able to do the call with one medic. He ended up becoming the driver. The second medic jumped in car three, went to the other call, and met a call firefighter in the A2. So we were able to transport ALS with both trucks. And that's basically the vision that I had and how it works. And if we are successful in the future, getting a safer grant for a fourth guy, you know, that type of scenario will happen all the time. We're just lucky enough to have, you know, the right number of people and the right call, so it actually worked out well for us.
Great. Those are my questions. All set.
So do you have the first alert bracelet activity here in Medfield? So if somebody does fall, it goes right to you guys?
No, no, usually, they go to a central station receiving facility, so we get the call that, you know, the person's down, and they'll, we'll respond out to them.
Okay. And then you, it's something you said I found interesting. So for the guys that live close, and they come back for an event.
Yep.
And the guys that live further away don't come back, because it's not as convenient.
Correct.
How is that with the camaraderie? Does the crew respect that? Like, listen, you're.
You know, you're always going to have, you're going to have, sometimes that, that'll be an issue, and sometimes it won't. You know, one of the things that we're trying to address in the new contract that they signed a few years ago is that any new full-time hires have to live within striking distance.
Okay.
So they have a fifteen-mile radius that they have to live within, which puts them within the response timeframe, that they should be able to come back. It, it just wasn't in the, in the past contracts. So, you know, I have a person that lives in Revere, I have one that lives in Marion, I have a couple of Norfolk, Franklin. I'm just trying to think. One of the new hires did move to Pleasant Street. He's renting a place over on Pleasant Street, so he does come back frequently. And he's one of the higher guys who comes back, that nine to eighteen percent of the full-time staff. But, you know, for the most part, I, I, the guys get along. You know, you're always going to have some, some people that don't like each other. It's the nature of the beast in any organization. You're going to have some people that just can't get along, and, and that's for me to manage. But for the most part, you know, if I'm standing there, everybody will get along.
And then in general, everything good from, from your views? Anything that you would like the selectmen to be looking at more as we roll into the next year?
No, I, you know, it's, when, when I was looking at, like, future grants, I'm, I'm starting to run out of ideas for grants, because everything's pretty much been replaced. The apparatus are in good shape. You know, there's always some smaller things, but I think I can manage replacement a lot of those things through some, some, you know, grants that I can, opportunities that are coming up. You know, right now, I'm waiting for a grant for HOES. I'm waiting for the SAFER Grant, obviously. According to FEMA, they're supposed to be released within the next sixty days. I was on the site this morning, and I didn't see anything come up for 2022 yet. So, so it's 2022 grants are the grants that they're releasing this year, right now. And then at the end of the year, it'll be 2023 grants will become available, as long as there's funding in Washington.
Can you just give that, just explain to them exactly what the SAFER Grant is?
SAFER Grant is Staffing for Adequate Fire Emergency Response, I think is what the acronym is. So it's basically a grant that you can apply for, for staffing, to bring you up into NFPA compliance for responding to fires, basically. So when you write the grant, it has to be for, you can't say, oh, I want to hire X guys, put them on the ambulance, because they're going to say, no joy. So you're trying to meet a standard for the number of firefighters that are on the fire ground within nine minutes of the call coming into the station. So technically, I'm supposed to have fifteen people on the fire ground within nine minutes of that report of a fire. So that's get in the truck, respond, get on scene, and start doing some kind of job to mitigate the incident. So I've written the grant basically around that. Hopefully, we'll be successful. You can also write them for retention of firefighters. So if, say, if you get the grant, and in three years, you want to apply again to get, see if they'll give you money to maintain it, that's always an option. Or you can write the grant for, say, if a department is predominantly call firefighters, or all call firefighters, you can write it for recruitment and retention of call firefighters. So within that, it, it talks about advertising and campaigns and, you know, all these different, different steps that you can take to attract people into your organization.
Then one last question. So as we move forward with continued construction in the town, we start looking at the development of the state hospital. Is there anything that concerns you, or that you want to make sure that you have on the table as those buildings get ready to be occupied by humans?
Well, it's, it's obviously, they have to meet, you know, different codes. So you have to be sprinkled buildings, they have to be, you know, have fire alarm systems. The biggest issue that I've seen so far is just the access to the buildings. That's kind of concerning for me, because you have a lot of grass areas, small parking lots that are further away from the building. And you're going to remember that if something's happening in that building, if I, if I have to ladder it, you know, how am I going to get a ladder to that building? Because ground ladders are okay, but, you know, like the aerial ladder that I have parked down at the station is actually the safest platform that I can climb on.
Sure.
And when I can't get that close to the building, it becomes a little bit concerning. I think that was like the biggest issue I had when I looked at the plans down there, because I was like, okay, if this thing's burning, how am I going to take care of it?
Sure.
You know?
So will you have input on that issue when the building permit is sought?
Yeah, that's going to be some of my comments that we'll, we'll talk about. I don't know if that's, if it's going to be, if it's in the big picture, or that's what the plan. I know they wanted to kind of keep the footprint the same, but it's definitely concerning. And, you know, we have a ladder truck that's a seventy-five-foot reach, which, at the time, it was purchased to fit in the station. So now you have like the Aura Medfield, that four-story building. If I put the ladder up in the parking lot, I can just touch the edge, the bottom edge of the roof line.
Wow.
Wow.
So it's, it's not really ideal. So I would need like a hundred-foot stick in order to reach that, but you're looking at one point two million dollars. It's, it's a, it's a big nugget, you know?
In that scenario, does another town have the hundred foot, and then you'd be calling?
Yeah, there, there, there are, you know, tower trucks around. I think, I want to say Walpole just bought a brand-new tower. I know Westwood has, has a straight stick. They don't have a tower. There are some ladder trucks around that, that we could utilize, but obviously, you know, you want to have one here, because that, it, it affects our ISO rating, too, the Insurance Service Office, I think is what it called, which is all tied back into your, your insurance for your commercial properties and your residential properties. So what happens is when they come in and look at the fire department, they look at how much water I can carry, how many people, the dispatching capability, hydrants in the town, and then they basically assign a number to this. And when I started, we were four, and we moved up to a three based on some, you know, changing the water-carrying capacity of the engines. We're moving in the right direction.
What are most towns in suburban Boston?
Well, in, it's all, it's all over the place. You know, you get, bigger towns are ones, which is the perfect, you know, I want to say Franklin's a one.
So they pay less than their insurance, then?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little, a little less. You know, it all depends on if the insurance company recognizes ISO, but it's kind of all over the place with insurance. You know what, I couldn't, you know, obviously Dover's going to have a different rating, because they don't have a hydrant in town, so that affects their number, their bottom-line number, because they have to carry the water with them. So if they get a house fire, they're using portable tanks.
Wow, I did not know that.
Or they, they, they drop a line in one of our hydrants on the line and then steal our water.
Do we get the bill later? Do they get the bill later?
No.
I'm good. Thank you.
So first of all, can you, your numbers were wonderful, and are those in an easy format, where you could just send them to us?
Yeah, I will send you a copy of this.
Thank you.
I've been scribbling on it in the last hour or so, but I'll send you a clean copy in the morning.
Okay, that'd be really appreciated. Secondly, I guess for me would be the issue of, of whether or not there's anything in regionalization, talking to departments around us, just to get the critical mass that you need. For, like, I mean, you talked about wanting nine firefighters within a certain amount of time at the station.
Well, you have to remember, I can get, you know, obviously, they, you know, they want you to be self-sufficient. But in this, in the era that we live now, we are experiencing the same problems as Millis, as Medway, as any of the towns around us. It's getting people to come back, and so we are relying on ourselves or each other right now through the mutual aid agreements that we have. So when I get two engines or eight guys back, I supplement that with work and fire assignment, which I notify Norfolk County, and then they make a phone call out, so then we get an engine from Norfolk, we get an engine from Millis, which supplements our staffing.
That sits at the station in case something happens.
No, they come to the fire.
Oh, they come to the fire, okay.
Hopefully, they're both bringing four more guys in each truck, so that'll give me, you know, I'll have 16 people, plus myself, and who, you know, hopefully, I'll get a couple more call firefighters back, or full-time staff, depending on who's around. And as a fire, say if the fire builds, then I would go to a second alarm and a third alarm. So what that, this has all been pre-planned, county level, so I can call resources as I need. It was like with the fire that we had at Rocky Woods, I had a, basically, I had used up a lot of the resources that we had around us, and I called MEMR and I said, "Hey, look, I want a forest fire task force." Which they send me, you know, I'll be, I get an engine, I get tankers, I get brush trucks, so they send me exactly what I need. So it's all been pre-play, you know, pre-planned and available, just right on the other side of the radio, I just have to call.
Yeah, well, that's excellent that that's available to you like that.
Yep.
So what was the next thing I was gonna ask you about? The, oh, I met an intern for the police department up at the state hospital.
Yep.
On, in one of Gene Minio's Bellefort events. And I know that you had an intern from the high school a while ago. Have you had any luck getting more interns?
We just completed a fire cadet program. We started with three, and I want to say we ended with two.
Excellent.
I don't think there was much interest in becoming firefighters there, at least they participated in the program. Every now and then, I'll pull an intern from Tri-County, someone who's interested in that, the police program that they have, and what they, they don't have enough places to place these kids, so. A couple of them were interested in the fireside, so they came and, you know, we entertained them for a couple of months. You know, but, you know, as far as interns, I just have to be careful, because in the state of Massachusetts, you have to be 18 years old to be a firefighter. So I want to make sure I, you know, I can't pull somebody in too early. And I also have to make sure that we were very careful training people and what we allow them to do. Some of them are very eager and want to participate, and, you know, with a lack of training, you can get into a lot of trouble. And it's my job to make sure everybody goes home.
So I guess the last thing I wanted to ask you about was, thinking back to when I was on the Capitol Budget Committee, and there was so little money that we had to allocate to things, and then the fire chief then sent us one, a request for a fire truck. And I mean, you know, it was, it was the amount, the cost of the fire truck was like double our annual budget for the Capitol Budget at the time. Is there some way to plan regionally for this equipment that is so expensive?
It's, that's kind of a tough thing to do. I know that, I want to say there might be an avenue through an AFG grant through, for apparatus, where you could get a truck. It's, I'd call it like a share-a-lot truck, so you could share it between communities. I'd have to do a little more research on it to see if any had been awarded. You know, it's, it's kind of tough, because usually, you know, then you get into the argument, okay, who's gonna maintain it? And who didn't replace things on it, who's responsible for the SCBA? Like, if us and Medway were gonna share a truck, Medway doesn't have Scott SCBAs, they have MSA, which is a completely different Scott. So our people aren't trained on them, they're not trained on our stuff. So you get those little technical issues there that you'd have to navigate through. Even the SCBA that we purchased, I purchased a quick connection, so basically, once you shut the bottle off, you just snap it together, and it's, it takes two seconds to put the two, the bottle and the pack together. I mean, in the old days, you had to stand there and crank it, and make the, actually physically make the connection. So we're a little different everywhere, and even in the, even in the threads on the hose is completely different on some of the trucks, between the communities. So I have to have, I'll just use for an example, I have to have like middle, I ever have something called Millis Threads. I don't know what threads they use, but, because you could have NH Threads, you could have NPSH, you could have iron pipe. This is how crazy the fire service is en masse. 325 fire departments, all operating completely different.
Yeah, but it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. In some instances, it doesn't. You know, some people have gotten together and they say, "Okay, we're gonna buy all the same stuff," you know, which is fine, but trying to get three fire chiefs to agree to one thing in a room could be a little difficult.
We had a, there was an issue, a discussion, this goes deep into my memory, so I'm trying to remember, but as I recall, there was a discussion years ago. It had to do with street sweepers. Why don't we, why don't we just share street sweepers? And the issue, there were two towns that had done it. And as a practical matter, I think the town that maintained, you know, that garaged the street sweeper, effectively, it was their street sweeper.
Yeah.
And the bottom line of kind of going in, trying to pool money to buy one that both towns could use, wound up lopsided in the direction of the town that actually possessed it.
Yep.
So that, I don't know that fire trucks would be the same thing, but.
I have seen it with ambulants.
Yep.
You know, because basically in ambulants, you're mandated by the state on what to carry on that ambulance. So if it's a BLS truck, you have to carry X. If it's an ALS truck, you have to carry X. And I have seen that before, where you have, like, one community will have like a tri-town ambulance, or just call it, and if one of the trucks goes down, then you can grab it and, you know, they can pull another one over, so. It's used in that capacity, and then there's usually an MOU for maintenance and, you know, everybody shares the maintenance, everybody shares the fuels, the fuel consumption. I have seen it with ambulants, but for engines, I haven't. But I'm sure it's out there somewhere. And if you want to go to an electric fire truck, grab your wallet, because it's about a million dollars.
It's a, it's a black Jeep out front in case anybody here.
Who gave you the heads up on that?
Brittany.
I thought that was my timeout, like when the horn went, I was done.
Were they parked too long at the charging station without being connected?
So I guess just a last thing for me, Chief, would be, obviously, one of the things that you did for us was to get to a paramedic service, and how does that feel like it's gone for you?
No, it's gone really well. Actually, you, the town, is what gave me a paramedic service when I started here. So I was fortunate enough to come in and then have to put that all together. So it's actually you, everyone here in the town is what gave it to me, and, you know, I just made it happen. It's going well. It's going the way that we were supposed to make it go. The revenue stream is way ahead of what we had predicted originally.
Oh, good.
It can only get better. And if you look at the number of second medicals we have, and, you know, once we have one additional paramedic, we'll be able to cover those second medicals, and we won't have to give them, give that revenue away to another community. Because Millis is making a ton on us with, every time they come over for an ALS medical. I just can't see sending, you know, putting a patient into the back of our truck and giving him basic care, and then having Millis show up, and then take the medic and dump him into my truck, and now you have two ambulances out of service. It just doesn't make sense. So what I typically do is I'll just give that patient to Millis, and then we'll put our truck back in service.
So one of the, one of the facts that always annoyed me was that Newton got their ambulance service for free, basically, because they had such a volume.
Yep.
And is there any way that we can bring enough volume together to, you know, if we combine with other towns or something to interest some provider and making it free?
No, unfortunately, if you're in the business of ambulance services, you know, in the community that we have, it's not gonna be self-sustaining. That's why you couldn't get an AMR or a Brewster in here. It's just, you know, you have to think about it, you know, you're looking at, you need at least eight people, if not more, 12 probably, to run a service on eight-hour shifts, similar to what the police staffing is. And you're looking at $890,000 at a minimum, and then they're gonna want to collect the revenue, so it's just gonna cost for you. This is, you know, one of the ways that we can get some extra revenue is by getting some staffing and then going and going mutual aid, you know. We've gone to Norwood a couple of times, believe it or not, which, I think it never happened. We've gone to Westwood a couple of times now, we've gone to Walpole, so we're opening the door to some of these other communities, and with that becomes a new revenue stream. You know, I think that's a good thing, but, you know, will never be, a municipal fire department ambulance service will never be self-sustaining.
Okay.
I recall when this was up for a vote, there was a minority on the committee that was in favor of looking at contracting, and if I remember right, the cost for contracting was twice what the incremental cost to the town was to do what we did, so.
Yeah, it was in the 800s, I believe.
Yeah, and when that was brought up at town meeting, there were a couple of people in the audience that said, "Wait a minute, you think we should pay twice as much?" And like, that didn't go anywhere.
And think about that, it's like the town of, the town of Carrow, I don't want to pick on them, they have a great fire and EMS system. They have two separate systems. Okay, so they have a call force that just does fire, and then they have a full-time EMS system. So if we had two individual groups, you're paying for two individual groups. Here, you know, with the fire, the vision that I have with the fire service, you have people that have, you know, they wear multiple hats, they can be hazmat operations people, they can be EMS, they can be fire suppression, they can be, you know, all these different hats that they can put on, so we're not, you know, if you think of it now, a second medical would come in, we'd have to call for EMTs to come back, and then a fire call would come in, then you'd have to call for fire guys to come back. Well, you already have the box on for an EMS medical, and they can do, they can handle everything. I think it's the best option for a smaller community like we have, because you want to try to be as, be able to handle it as much as you can by yourself. And then once things start to escalate, you have to call those other communities. Like, just like last Friday, we, you know, we, how many times have I said to you, we were covering Franklin Station? I think that's the first time it's ever happened since I've been here. We've been to Medway a whole bunch of times, but.
Sounds like things are going well then, thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Thanks, Chief.
We have a citation for you, because you've been here for five years, so.
I thought it was 10 when I saw Memorial Day. Oh, it's gonna follow up.
Thank you for everything you do for Medfield.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I didn't get you guys anything.
All right, thank you so much, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next, we have Sarah Hannah-Fenn, Director of the Council on Aging, to request appointment of Patty Byrne to the Council on Aging Board and provide Council on Aging update. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you very much, thanks for having me. First, I'll just start off with, dear Select Board, on behalf of the Council on Aging, I would like to, I would like to support Patty Byrne for the open position on the Council on Aging Board. Patty has become an active participant at the center, participating in many of the programs and services we offer. I believe that Patty will be a valuable addition to the board. I ask that you kindly appoint Patty Byrne to the open, open position.
Sounds good to me. We appreciate people that are willing to sit there and step forward on this stuff.
Yeah, that's great.
No complaints, I'm thrilled that she's stepped up, and you're happy to have her.
Great, very excited to have her.
So Patty is a repeat visitor to my office hours at the center, and she is perhaps the most organized person that comes. She has a list, and it's often like nine things long, that she, that she wants to take up and.
She's very organized.
Oh, yeah, she's clearly a very bright lady, and she'll be, she'll do you really well, I think, so. You're fortunate to have her, I think. So do we have a motion then on this?
Motion to support Sarah's request for, for Patty Ryan to the Council on Aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next. Yes, Rich? You need to use the microphone.
Oh, yeah, ask Bill if he's got the mic.
That allows people at home to hear you.
It's really a quick question, I don't think any of you are gonna care with me.
Does this mean that she can participate at tomorrow's board meeting as a member, as opposed to? Oh, she has to be sworn in, right.
She does her ethics test and gets sworn in, so I would have her sit in as a non-voting member, so she gets all that done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good advice.
All right, so my updates, I also want to start off by saying thank you for supporting the garage, we're very excited. We're looking forward to the next steps. And for my brief update, the COA is in a good spot. It's been a very smooth transition for me, as well as the COA participants, I believe. I feel supported by the townhouse, staff at the COA, the board, and the COA participants, which is a great feeling to have. Attendance has been consistent, but with the summer, we will see a decline. This will keep, this has been consistent with how it's been in the past. So we will keep that in mind when we are planning our July and August calendar. We are fully staffed, which is great, very excited about that. We are collaborating with different town departments and town groups. For the library, we're collaborating with them once a month, and they're coming to do a book club with us. The participants are very excited about that, it's well-attended. We've also worked with the Medfield Garden Club. They've come for an evening presentation, it was well-attended. We had a lot of new people for the COA, as well as the garden club. We have a new intergenerational program with Tri-County High School. Once a month, they come and they prepare and serve seniors a hot lunch, which has been great, new, new intergenerational program. And then we've also had the cosmetology students come in and do hand massages and nails, so that was great. Another quick little update, we have been doing paint nights for a year now. It started with intergenerational Women's Day. And Casey Worth is a Medfield resident, and she comes in, volunteers her time, and she teaches the seniors step-by-step how to paint. We were actually featured on the front page of the Hometown Weekly last Thursday, so if you haven't seen that, look for it, we're very excited. Transportation is great, working on a brochure to share with, to share our services. And outreach, we have multiple support groups and educational programs happening. Recently, we had Jonathan Odell from Mass Commission for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing come in, that was a great resource. And we are trying to have a coffee with the captain, Bill DeKing, from the Medfield Fire Department on senior safety. So lots of great things happening down at the center, I think we're in a good spot, and, yeah. Do you guys have any questions?
Just curious about the, the club, right, the Restbit?
The Restbit Program.
Yeah, just curious how that's doing.
It's doing actually really great. We, for the summer, some people go away for the couple of months. We have 11 people in the program right now. We just had someone attend today for a tour. So we're looking like we're gonna fill that spot as well. But that's fully staffed, and we have great volunteers who run that program, and it's, we're, we're good.
And is the program filled up?
It is. We have one open spot.
Wow.
And is it the same size as it's always been? Because it, I know that Roberta kept wanting to make it bigger.
She did. So as of right now, we're staying with the 11:30, it starts from 11:30 and goes till 3:00. So that's the timeframe that we're at. We are looking at potentially adjusting the timeframe a little bit. But as of right now, it's, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, and you have two new employees there, are they working out well?
They are, yes. The team is great, everybody down at the center is wonderful, so.
And I, because I.
Anything else?
No, that's fine.
No, I thought you said it was done, sorry.
I was just curious about that one in particular. That, if you're gonna give me one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
How'd the yard sale go?
Amazing, actually, probably one of the better ones that we've had. Lots of people were storing their treasures, and they brought them down. It was a true community effort. I mean, people were donating items, the volunteers were incredible. Coming in every single day, wiping down the items, pricing them, placing them, and then just, we had a line outside the door, so. Thanks for asking, they're very proud. I believe they raised over $8,000, so, yeah.
Nice. Uh, so, you're all set, okay. So I go to the Kingsbury Club to work out, and I noticed that you have the metal plates over the driveway that Bob Reli's working on that, everything good there?
Yep, everything's good. When they're actually working in that area, they have someone assigned, and they actually help the seniors go into the parking lot. That, that is kind of a little issue because of how tight that entrance is.
That's narrow, yeah.
I mean, I, at some point, I would love to maybe see that extended a little bit, but further down the road.
You guys need another exit out of that parking lot at the.
That would be the ideal thing, right?
That would be ideal.
Enter one end, exit, not gonna happen, huh?
Something to talk about later.
Yes, we can talk about that. We are working with DPW to widen that existing entrance, but there's some concern about doing the entrance and exit based on some of the stuff that's underneath the road there, so.
I think widening it should be fine.
Yeah, cool, got it.
Safety.
Sure.
With respect to widening.
You need the microphone.
It's for the people at home, they start, like.
This is how we limit, this is how we limit the questions.
What you think, trust me.
My question was, since half the entrance is dug up already, could anything be done now to widen it a bit?
We may or may not be working on that, I can, neither can Vermont, I doubt.
Certainly would make sense, wouldn't it?
Okay, I hear you, thank you.
Uh, and then, uh, the piece of property between the parking lot and the new development, I noticed some of that was starting to get cleaned up. Did you get a chance to talk with Bob? Are you gonna be able to take trees down and some of that?
We spoke about it, and we actually have a board meeting tomorrow, so we're gonna talk about it at the board meeting a little bit more tomorrow. He said, you know, he's happy for us to come over and, and see which trees he's interested in taking down. I don't see it being a problem, but.
I think it's mutual, too. I think there's some things, like, if you guys are interested in, to ask him and see what you can.
I wasn't prepared. I guess I am now.
You just got a preview of the agenda. You just got a preview.
It's on the agenda.
And then, you know, welcome. You've been doing this now for, what, about six months?
Almost six months. Next month will be six months.
All right, so all's well?
Everything is great. Yeah, I'm very happy.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sarah, just had a couple things for you, too. First of all, I found my notes from Patty Byrne, and, and the last thing was, uh, Council on Aging Director's salary. She wanted you to earn more money, and she told me that you were excellent. She told me that you've been working six days a week since January, cause you didn't have the volunteer, I guess, person as well. She said sixty to eighty hours a week, so thank you for, for filling in all that extra work in that six-month time. And I hope that now that you've got, uh, the name is escaping me, new hire just started.
Lois Abramow.
Yes.
Yes.
I hope that's working out well, so good.
She's often running, and, and it's great, so no more Saturdays for me.
So that's why we got the recommendation for the new board member.
Oh, she's, she's wonderful.
She will be excellent on your board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I also would tell you that I, I read, uh, your monthly newsletter today. Those are so well-done.
Oh, yeah.
Keep it up. Okay, thank you guys for coming, and our next thing is, uh, discussion items. Town Administrator Goals Update.
Oh, no, we got Gene Minio.
Oh, Gene Minio. Is Gene here again? We hardly ever see you, Gene.
Well, like, has Gene left?
So thanks. I just wanted to talk about next summer, 2024, because we anticipate that Trinity will begin their construction earlier than that next year on the property. They have made it clear that we'll still be able to access our building, but it doesn't seem like it'll be safe to hold any events on our lawn once construction is underway. So we wanted to have a conversation with you and ask for permission to use the front lawn, which would primarily be that flat green area where the Clark Building used to be, so behind where the buses are currently parked. On that, it's kind of a triangular-shaped piece.
Is that where they used to hold the movies?
Yeah, exactly. And I, I anticipate that Trinity's gonna need to access that front lawn at some point for infrastructure when they install it, which is critical to our development, so we are happy to work out the schedule around their schedule. So if there's a month that we can't hold a, events or something, that, you know, we're agreeable to that. But essentially be looking for the same, similar schedule, probably by mid-April through the month of October.
So the only question I would have for you, Christine, is, is seeing that that's the town land, and I know overtime, like, the movies have been there and car show, et cetera. I don't want to displace somebody that has an annual event, so it'd kind of be, kind of looking at the calendars. Cause when I saw this on the agenda, I was like, I, I totally understand what you're trying to do, but I also want to make sure we don't block anybody out, because, oh, nope, we knocked out April to October. So can we get some time to just make sure that we've got, like, we, we're making sure that everybody can do what they?
I'm, I'm honestly, I've, I've been talking to Trinity. I, I'm concerned about even agreeing to that now for next summer, cause I don't know when they're going to take up that water line. So I'm concerned if you're booking out your acts for next summer, and then that whole front lawn is, is torn up, what we would do in that instance, so.
Would they be placed across the street over nor, over towards, uh, like, where they have the softball fields and all of that? If, is that owned by Park and Rec, or is that owned by us?
Park and Recreation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sliding Hill is, is ours, the Select Board, I think.
The hill would be tough. I, I mean, I know the top, I'm just trying to think of, of other areas if that should get impacted. Where, cause I don't want to see you, you lose the momentum with the, with the acts.
Well, there's a field that's in front of the trailer. I know Trinity's only getting half of that. The state has the other half. But that's another wide-open space.
Yeah. No, I think at the end of the day, there's space. I think it's to your point, what's it gonna look like, right?
That's what I'm just, I'm concerned about when we're gonna be digging up that water line.
Yeah.
I think the other thing, this came up at our last meeting, the question is, the green is a whole lot bigger than the lawn, so I, in terms of the reg. It seems to me that in principle, we could, we could give you assurance that we would be working to be able to enable you to continue to provide performances.
Yep.
My sense is that we probably would need to know what those performances are, just to under- understand. In other words, this is town property, so it opens up issues around if it's used for one purpose and anybody else wants to come in and do it. I, I want to be sure we understand what, what that, it's, it's kind of like when we were talking about the Pocket Park several years ago, about using it for the, you know, the Coalition Suicide Prevention. And the question is, yeah, if you use it one way, then you've, you've converted the property over to something that potentially could be, for, you know, demanded or, or requested by other people who want it for other purposes. And I want to make sure I understand that complexity. But the bigger issue for me is the green is huge. And that's a lot bigger than what you're using right now, so I don't think that's, I don't think you're asking for the entire green to be locked up. I don't think.
Well, I think we probably, um, we would also most likely need to bring in two or three storage units so that everything that we have stored now inside the chapel would be stored on the lawn.
So that you'd have easy access to it?
Right.
So if, if we were doing, I guess, I guess for me, I'd like to actually know the full scope of what you need and what you're gonna do, because if we're talking about storage units going somewhere, I'm not sure right smack dab in the front of the property is aesthetically where we'd want it. I mean, maybe operationally, that's what you need. Uh, but it almost easier for me to picture storage units to the right over by the security trailer. That may be a dumb idea. I'm just, you see where I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Just kind of using the whole green for however long it's gotta be used for. I'd at least like to be sure I know what it is we're actually approving.
Yeah. Well, I think we'd, we were envisioning putting the stage to the right if the buses are at your back and you're facing the campus.
Over near the, the house, the super.
Closer to, what is it, Cottage Road, the one that you can't drive on now. Put the stage over there, assuming that people were still gonna primarily access the way they do now.
Right, right.
From the open entrance.
Right.
And then putting storage probably closer to where the pine trees are. That, that big grove of pine trees on the left side. Right.
Okay. That, at the level that you just described, it sounds like it's going in the kind of direction that would be better than just putting it all smack dab in the middle of the green, so.
Yeah, we'd, I think we'd want the stage closer to trees and have some shade, and then we'd have one unit, storage unit near that that has all the audio equipment in it.
Yeah.
And if we had a smaller or more intimate kind of performance, we could also tighten up the space with vendors and tents and, you know, kind of define a smaller area than the entire green.
In fact, that actually raises another issue. If you did, right now, you have food trucks and we'd probably want to continue that.
Yeah.
Would you use Cottage Street for that? Well, how would that part work?
Yeah, it, well, partly will depend on Trinity and their schedule, right? So if Cottage Street is being worked on, we obviously can't use that. We'd probably want to put them on the other street.
The main entrance. Oh, that, we could do that, okay.
Is, um, is Trinity working on Cottage Street?
I don't.
I think that's town land, right?
I don't think they are.
I don't think they are. I think that's town land.
Right.
Yeah, they are doing some work that's back in the area that you're talking about, though. Cause they're gonna have to bring some infrastructure up through there, so.
Right.
They'll end up doing some work on Cottage.
So I guess, I guess maybe the real issue is, to the extent Trinity can tell us whether there's one part of the green that would be probably the most likely to be disrupted, and another part, I, what I, all I'm getting at is I don't yet have a clear picture of what it is we'd be approving. Proving in principle, I think that's okay, um, but approving specifics, I don't know what those specifics. I don't have a good picture of those specifics yet, and maybe none of us do.
It sounds like we want to help you, but, uh, we don't know what the dynamics are gonna be, so.
Well, what specifics do you anticipate needing to approve?
Like.
Where's Trinity gonna come in and what do they need to do? Cause, cause, so something that would help me, just because this happens when you, everyone visualizes in their head what we think we're doing. If you could literally do a layout of, just doing a visual and say, this is where the stage would be. This is where we want to put the trailers, cause then we see, if you're sitting with Trinity and say, okay, if you're gonna be digging up land for infrastructure, if it's where they planned on going, then we just said, let's have you do something that's not even possible. So I just think, and then we've got time to do a check and balance, and there's certainly enough meetings coming up. But, uh, I think what I'm hearing is, we certainly want to support, make sure that performance is gonna occur, calendar year 2024. But to sit here tonight and say, yeah, no problem, it could be a problem just cause we don't know where they need to go, what their plans are gonna be, how they're fencing things off, just, just to get a better visual on how that whole land's gonna look. And then, like, my, my concern, too, is because it is town land, I want to make sure we're not boxing anybody out right out of the gate, that we, we look at what's going on, what events you're doing, and what, Christine, what things you typically get from, from groups that may want?
The, the car show is the regular one that occurs to me.
That's in June, right?
I don't know if there's any other that's regular.
No, the movies, they've stopped.
And no movies will be going on with Trinity, so that's what I have to worry about that.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll just be the car show.
And then the parkings.
And that may not be able to be done either with the construction and everything that's going on up there as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming the parkings is gonna end up going across the street to the softball, baseball fields if people aren't gonna be able to access the back area. Well, though, technically, we should be able to access the back area the whole, entire time, because they, even the construction will not prevent people from getting to the north field. Right. Okay.
Sounds like we need to hear from Trinity about what their schedule's likely to be.
Gene, from your standpoint, this seem, for booking next summers, this seems, you're, it's still an early, you'd need to be able to talk to, to acts that, to assure them you have a place.
Yep.
But you don't book people like a full?
We are getting requests to book next summer already.
Are they, are these groups asking to please book them? Where, where do the requests come from?
Yeah, Grace Kelly wants to have a festival in Medfield on that property next May.
I got it, okay.
So I guess what, what I'm thinking is, is that we want to, we want to help you figure out how to do it. We just don't know exactly where.
Right.
And the good news is that the town does have a fair amount of land up there, so that if, if the green doesn't work, then maybe another area could work.
Like across the street, you mean, top of the Sliding Hill or something?
Yeah, or I'm thinking on, on closer to the town, that field that, part of which is, uh, uh, state land. Between the Arboretum and, and Larkinville.
Oh, A1, yeah.
The eastern parcel.
Got it.
I mean, there's.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's gonna be an issue. Yeah.
You mean the state agricultural land that's there next to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you sit down with Trinity? Just, they submitted their construction plans, like, go out.
Yeah, yeah, we've been, we've been talking about it. We've been sitting down plenty, talking about it, and the question is the timing issue.
Right.
So I think maybe if you prepare a sketch to, they better understand where everything's gonna be.
Okay.
And take it back up on the 20th.
Okay. Yep. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, now our next item is the discussion items, Town Administrator Goals Update and Discussion of Town Administrator Goals for FY24, and we just got a handout on that.
I just got to pack it, but actually, I'm just gonna ask if you take, um, number seven and take Kathy McDonald, who's quietly sitting in the audience, um.
Okay, number seven, Kathy McDonald, request for the Select Board to sign contract with Amanda Decker of Bright Solutions Consulting to write the Drug-Free Communities Grant for 2024 application. You need a microphone somewhere.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm just here to respectfully request that you sign our proposal, which is a, um, a contract to use Amanda Decker again to help us prepare our competitive bid for funding for our DFC grant for years six through 10 with the CDC.
Gus, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, so you're, you're gonna, you're getting the mow-gulay from me here.
Okay.
Should I get a highlighter?
No, the, the issue was in the agenda packet. The contract from the town refers to proposed scope of work, Attachment A, and shall furnish services related program in accordance with the scope of services provided in Attachment A, and, uh, town shall pay for the program in accordance with the pricing in Attachment A, and the package didn't have any Attachment A, so this is, I don't even know what this, this contract's worth.
I have attached, I don't think you got the most recent update. Do you have the signed contract in front of you with the edits? Okay, so Brittany, um, Brittany has those. I have a copy in front of me, but, um.
We have the, we have the signed contract, but no, but no attachment.
There's something that says contract.
Oh, wait, I'm looking at an Attachment A from a different document that I did something earlier, so that is an Attachment A, but not the Attachment A that you're referring to.
Didn't you realize it was a DPW attachment?
It was a different Attachment A from my P-card. Um. So.
So if I don't know what the contract is worth, I don't know what the delegate.
I can tell you what the contract is worth. I'm sure you'd like to see it, but it's eight thousand dollars is what, is the cost of the contract.
That's helpful, okay.
Yes. And we have it budgeted into, um, we can cover, we have five thousand budgeted into our current funding in our year five of our grant, which will start, um, September 30th. And the difference in three, we can either make up from unused money in that grant, because that percentage is allowed, or we could use it from gift funds, or we could talk to Medfield Foundation to see if they might, um, help us. So there's, there's a, there's different ways if, if we had any issue, which we don't.
So it's an eight thousand doc contract. You have money one way or the other to fund that contract. We're simply approving the contract.
One hun, yes.
The only question that I'm left with is the billing rates that are referred to in Attachment A that we'll refer. Is it, this is just a town materials contract?
Mark, do you know about that? Because we use, she, uh, Ms., Amanda Decker gave us a contract, and then we changed it to use a standard contract that, um.
She's supposed to be paying for the, uh, the work as she performs on a pro-rata basis.
What would be that rata, what would that rata be?
That, as I recall, it was, uh, it's, it's tasks or breakdowns. So as she reaches certain, gets certain percentage of work done, she gets paid allocated on that basis.
For, for eight thousand, do we get a completed grant?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we need.
Yes, hundred percent.
So this is a single grant that she's writing? I'm not, I'm just trying to understand. I'm not really, single grant that she's writing, she's getting paid eight thousand do, dollars to do the grant, and there are intermediate milestones? It's not, it's not an issue of a time?
As I recall, I looked at it.
Town shall pay for the program in accordance with the pricing in Attachment A. So all I'm asking about is, I guess, what the pricing in Attachment A is. It sounds like the bottom line is the total cost is eight thousand dollars, but the, but the rate at which it gets paid is in accordance with pricing in Attachment A.
That you're not saying.
That nobody has.
Right. Originally, her request was half upfront and half on completion, which we, Mark had given us feedback that we cannot pay for any services upfront that we haven't received. And so then we amended that to be, um, piecemeal, as Mark had, had said, so.
I recall giving, um, Brittany language to insert in the payment clause that the payment would be related to the amount of work she'd performed already.
So what were pieces? I mean, you don't even have to show me the paper. Just tell me what the pieces were.
I'm gonna get that to you, because it's very specific, and it's, this is a multi-step overtime process. We have to meet with our sector reps. We have to do, um, coalition work. We have to do data collection. We have to present. So a lot of the work, she's coming, we're, then we gather it, then we meet again with it, and then, much like when we did our, our work together for, our, yeah.
So I hate to do this to you. Is there a reason why we need to sign this tonight, or can we get that information and sign it at our next meeting?
Yes, and sort of. So, yes, of course, I'm gonna get you that information. We are eager to start the work with her soon. If I could get on your next, when would that be?
It's the 20th.
What day are we on today?
June 20th, Tuesday.
I'm away, but if I could, if I could get that to you and you can vote in my absence, that would be okay?
Yep.
Fabulous.
Philosophically, I'm on board with doing it, it's just that.
Yeah, I'm really sorry.
I may be the, the, the main crusader for disciplined contract management on town contracts.
Yes, we did hear that last meeting.
Yeah. And I'm making a point around that, not around the cost. And I'm making a point around that, not around the cost, or around the purpose.
No, I understand completely, it's a, it's a 100% acceptable request.
Would you have emailed it to us?
Yes. Well, you know, what I think happened is, when the revisions happened, I'm wondering if, if there was, they're in parts, right, because there are different parts, and it looks like somehow you didn't get the complete, I know I have seen it, but there's been a multitude of emails that have gone back and forth, so the time it's going to take me to put this, my hands on this and make sure it's exactly what you want, I'd rather just kick it out and do it, and we'll come back.
Part of my, part of the reason for my obnoxious behavior, mostly directed at DPW, despite the fact I think our director of DPW is tremendous, is if I spot gaps in a contract in the half an hour I spend reviewing it before one of our meetings, that tells me nobody really did the thorough job of reviewing the contract they actually want, which tells me I'm not even sure whether the people who put the contract in are actually getting what they really want, because they clearly, that's not meant as a criticism, it's a philosophical statement.
No, I know, you know what I think happened, is we, you got back the standard contract in all the guts of hers, that was very specific, um, got dropped out.
Yeah.
So I think, if we could supplement hers, or, you know, or insert it as, as an attachment, as you're suggesting, then you will have more than you want to know.
Yeah. It says it's Attachment A.
Well, it's fun being here anyways, this evening, so.
Good to see you.
It's a good thing you moved Kathy up, because if she'd have to sit there for an hour and a half and then get there.
That would have been a total bummer.
Thanks, everybody.
Eileen, did you have anything?
No, no, I'm sorry.
We'll just show this video at the next department head meeting.
Remember when Kathy came and didn't have what she needed?
So I think the most important thing is that, is that five years ago, I think it cost 5,000 to have her write the grant, and she, and it turned into 625,000 for the town in grant, federal grant money, so we want to do this.
And the bragging rights that Amanda has is, which I should knock on wood, she's 100% funded, so this is a very competitive bid, and, um, let's hope we don't break her track record, so.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, for, for what I know, I don't have any problems, it's the stuff I don't have.
All right, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
All right.
No worries.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the Town Administrator Goal Update, Discussion of Town Administrator Goal for FY '24.
So believe it or not, it's that time again.
I know.
I feel like we just did this. So I put together a little packet of things I need you to consider and review, and we can, um, do some feedback at the next meeting, and we'll have all of this included in the, uh, agenda packet for next, for the 20th. But the first document I have, uh, this is the fiscal year '23 goals, and we've given you a status update on the goals, um, and I'm happy to report that everything will be completed, uh, by June 30th. And then attached, I have some proposed, um, Town Administrator Goals for fiscal year '24. You will notice that they are slightly smaller, that they have, uh, been in the past, however, we feel that there are two or three of the goals and objectives that we've listed on here, which are fairly large projects, uh, which are going to take a significant amount of staff time this year, so we have pared down, uh, some of our goals for this year. And then the third document you have in your packet for this evening is a memo that was written by Jamie Kenny, who is our labor council from last year, just reminding you of the performance review process that you're required, uh, under the contract to, uh, perform, and just setting out what that process will be this year, and what evaluation tool you'll be using, how you want to conduct that. So I just included in that, your, in your packet, so we can start talking about that on the 20th.
Did she tell us what the process will be, or is she asking us what, is it?
So this, this is her memo from last year, and this was just outlining what a process could be, there are some towns that do it similar to how we did it last year, there are some towns that, instead of utilizing Jamie's firm to compile, they will ask a former Select Board member to compile, um, an independent review, so it's, it's up to you, um, how you want to do that piece of it.
I guess straight out the gate, my thought is, we probably don't have anything that was so egregious at last year's, any idea she has, that's, that's great, we ought to think about it, but last year's process, I thought, was fine, so there's nothing egregious about what we did.
No, no, not at all.
We don't need to fix any problems from last year, if there's some good ideas in here about ways to do it better.
Right.
We could look at it, is that fair, Senator?
Well, the one thing that, that struck me as a good idea was to have a former Select Board member, uh, do it instead of hiring and paying Jamie's firm to do it, just to save some money, so.
That's fine, that's up to you to...
Yeah.
So is that somebody like Mike, since he's the most recent, or is it?
Well, we could figure, we probably have to figure out whether we have a former Select Board member that's willing to even do it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
I'm just going back, we haven't had that many bodies, right?
Not that many former.
Yeah, I mean, strictly administrative, so we don't need, like, Christine, to recommend a particular Select Board, former Select Board member, it's just, uh, as long as, okay.
Yeah, and just, just for clarification, this is Jamie's memo from last year, so she was fine with the process, obviously, that you conducted last year, so she has no new recommendations, but is open to, if you would like to change the process, she's more than happy to, to guide you through that.
So this is only going to tell us what we saw last year?
What you saw last year.
So it really is, if there's any, that, that one point, it's worth mulling over and thinking about whether we want to do it, uh, and maybe confirming that there's, there probably is.
Well, because I think that what we did last year, which I thought worked out well, is that we all submitted in a similar format.
Yeah.
And then the person, it was Jamie's partner, that then came and presented to us.
Right.
Right, she wasn't here that night. So what I'm hearing, being said right now, is we could still follow that same process, but it all gets fed into a former Select Board member, and they would compile all that, and then present it.
Right.
Okay.
Well, how much, how much were you charged for the, uh, law firm to do it last year?
I'd have to go back and look, I don't remember.
I would look at that, because if it...
If it's noise, then why not, or?
If it, yeah, if it, if it's not something, if it's modest, relatively speaking, then you're better off to do that, rather than...
Okay. So we'll get, we'll get that number, and then we'll make a decision.
The skill is primarily being able to take the data and compile, and given that we send it in in the spreadsheet, it's not really, it's not really like, it would be really important for a former Select Board member to exercise any judgment on the content, it's just a, it's a mechanical process.
I think it's just work on your part to determine what that spreadsheet will be, um, and who's preparing it, that's all.
Okay, so more to come on that then. Our next item is to discuss response to the open letter regarding recent anti-Semitic events in Medfield from Medfield Together. And I know that I had, uh, put together a draft of a press release, that, that I don't know if you guys got it.
Uh, I did share a draft with everybody, um, there's a copy of it over here.
Yeah, I'm not yet ready to act on this, I, I'm not satisfied I fully understand the circumstances, and I also am not sure this is the only issue, if we, if we, if it's important for us to make a statement, I think we ought to be making a statement that addresses a broad range of issues, not one, because a month from now, we could have someone come in and say, well, you need to make a statement about something else, and I'm actually skeptical of, because I've already stressed, I'm skeptical about these statements in the first place, uh, because they don't really tie to action, uh, and in this particular case, I'm not satisfied, I fully understa, I'm not judging it yet, I'm not satisfied, I fully understand the circumstances, and things are, a little, are still points of, uh, confusion to me on the cer, in the specific circumstance.
Eileen, where are you on this?
Well, I don't, I certainly don't mind issuing something, I, there's actually some statements here that aren't even accurate, so I definitely don't want to go after this one.
Yeah, then we need to get it corrected, yeah. Do you want to put some edits in then, and?
Yeah.
Then we can look at it maybe at our next meeting?
Yeah, because I, I'm not going to lie, this caught me a little bit off guard, when I saw the, what's that, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, Stephanie's came up as a topic, I was like, oh, okay, didn't realize we were going to do this, then just saw this before we started the meeting, so, um, let me wrap my head around this, I know, Gus, you want to wrap your head around it, and then come back with some edits, but I, you know, I don't want anyone who's watching tonight, watches YouTube later, 100% support, make a statement, but I don't disagree with what Gus is saying, is I think it needs to be a broader statement, so I don't want to, I don't want to cherry pick two or three ideas, or not ideas, excuse me, two or three issues and items that came up, I think there's a broader message that we want to get out against any sort of, um, uh...
Hate.
Yeah, hate in general, it's, there's a variety of ways in which people try to express that.
Yeah, well, take your hand at editing then, good. And we'll look at that at our next meeting then.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, our next item then is to review the town, authorized town administrator, renew the town's police and fire 111F injured on duty insurance policy with VfIS.
Yes, this is our, our standard renewal each year, uh, and this covers our firefighters, call firefighters, and our police department.
Covers them for what? Injured on duty?
Workers' compensation, so, uh, public safety employees are not eligible for the workers' compensation, we cover other town employees, and they're, have special coverage under what's called 111F.
What's the, what's the reason for that, does it, do you know, Mark? Why they're not covered under just regular workers' comp? I mean, you have a, a workers' comp system, why have a separate system?
It's a very different...
It's more thorough coverage than, than the average worker would get.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and we, along, for a long time, did not have that, have coverage, the town was essentially self-insured for it, and we took some hits.
Yes, it was very costly to us, in a couple of cases. So we put this, uh, I think 2019, uh, was the first year, uh, we put in, uh, this insurance
Okay, our next item is to...
Just, uh, just keeping straight my head.
Do I need to motion that we authorize her?
The police and fire also have a special liability cover, I'm, I'm stick, it sticks in my head that they have also a special liability coverage that we, this goes back like four years, we approved money for, I think it was liability coverage, and it was probably maybe just for the police.
I think this is, this is the only separate coverage that they have, um, they are indemnified in our regular insurance policy.
They have all sorts of special preferences, so anytime there's a cardiac event, it's presumed to be work-related.
Yeah, this wasn't health, this was a, this was a special category of insurance that we picked up the funds for, it might have only been for the police.
So this isn't health? This is if they're injured on duty?
Uh, right.
Okay.
No, I know that, I, it just triggered that there was another kind of special insurance that we have, that they needed to have, and I'm trying to remember, it goes back like three years, it was in the budget, okay, never mind, I was trying to refresh my memory, and obviously this is...
I think it may be this one.
Uh, I don't think it was.
Chris, did you want a board vote on this, on the...
Uh, yes, just to authorize me to sign it, to renew it.
If you can make a motion, then, Eileen.
Okay, uh, motion that we authorize the town administrator to renew the town's police and fire, uh, 111F injured on duty insurance policy with VfIS.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next, authorize the town administrator to renew the MIA insurance for 2024.
And this is our property and casualty insurance.
So that's sep, last time we did MIA, it was health insurance, we approved the rates...
We did, we approved the rates.
But that was health insurance.
That was health insurance, this is property and casualty.
Do we know the rate increases on this, or not?
This was a 10.2% increase over last year.
Yikes.
Yeah.
Yikes.
All right, shall I motion?
Yes, unless there are questions.
Motion to authorize the town administrator to renew the MIA insurance for 2024.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Uh, next, authorize the town administrator to sign the net metering agreement for ever, with Eversource for the DPW garage solar array. Any questions about that?
No.
Net metering is good, net metering is good.
Yes, this is the last step to, uh, get this fully operational, so we're, we're excited to get moving on this.
Start making some money.
I authorize, or we authorize, motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the net metering agreement with Eversource for the DPW garage solar array.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Just as an aside on net metering, the nice thing about net metering is it insulates you from cost, the price changes in the electricity to the extent you're producing, because either you're not getting paid a lot for what you produce, because you're not being charged a lot for what you consume, or you get paid a lot for what you produce, and so it, it reduces the impact of any cost increases on you, so I've, the more I've seen price fluctuations, and no fluctuations to speak of in my electric bill, the more, and more I've come to like net metering.
Okay, citizen comments, we appear to have none. Consent agenda, we've got, uh, let's see, looks like five things, request from Belfort for one day, all alcohol permit for Sunday, September 17, from 12 to 6. Secondly, request from Zulu Gallery for a one-day wine beer permit for Thursday, June 15, from 5:30 to 11:00. Third, request from Medfield Youth Hockey to place a sandwich board in the intersection of Route 109 and Hartford Streets to advertise registration for Mites/House League Girls from June 10 to June 24. Fourth, request from the Friends of the Dwight Derby House for a one-day beer wine license permit, bless you, bless you, for Thursday, June 8, from 6 to 9. And lastly, request from the Medfield Energy Committee to place sandwich boards at the four usual locations from June 10 to June 24.
Could I ask Gene one question? This is specifically for Sunday, September 17, uh, but you, is it, do we, we approved a whole bunch of Saturdays, and the reason you're asking for this is this is a Sunday, not a Saturday?
Correct.
Okay, and is that a, is that one of the major September performance things, or?
They're going to do it as a two-day festival.
Ah, two-day festival, okay.
Who's, who's performing?
Um, it's going to be a big lineup.
Oh, cool.
Multiple.
Okay, great.
Dead and Company?
Who?
Dead and Company?
Working on it, working hard.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion then?
Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, meeting minutes, April 6, April 18.
I am good with those.
So am I.
Need to, so, do we have a motion to approve them then?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 18, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Town Administrator Updates, Christine.
A couple of them, uh, attached to the agenda is our next meeting dates through the end of the calendar year, um, just for everybody to note, we're only meeting once in July and once in August, so if you have anything, uh, get it into us soon, you're I'm giving, I'm giving Cindy a vacation. Just a thank you to Brittany for working on the redesign of the new website, she's been working on that for a little over a year, that launched, we kind of had a soft launch this week, we're still adding some, some content, so stay tuned for seeing some upgrades to some of our pages, but, yes, it's much different.[1643.23]
And then a huge thank you to the third and eighth graders for visiting us at the town hall the past two weeks. It's been fantastic hosting, I think we hosted nine third grade classes over three days and it's for Medfield History Day. And it's just, it's fantastic. It's so much fun to have them in on doing their tour and we're all learning new things about the town hall we didn't knew. And I actually found a couple of potential third grade interns. And I am a little concerned about my contract because one of them wanted to know when it was up. So I may have a third grader filling my spot very soon. So it was absolutely fantastic and the eighth graders were here today and it's Marion's birthday today. So the eighth grader is actually saying happy birthday to her outside. So it was really nice to have them around the past couple of weeks.
Did they come up via bikes?
They did the bike tour.
About my house, I was wondering what was going on.
It was the eighth grade bike tour, so.
Should have gone on my cycle and joined them.
It's just really great to, you know, teach them what we do or try to teach them what we do on a daily basis. And it's just really nice to have all their questions. But out of all the classes we had, the one thing they really want to know is why we still have Mike Sullivan's giant gavel on the floor over there. And that we should be portraying, you know, have it up somewhere.
It should be in front of the chair.
Yeah.
That's not his, is it?
Yes, it was given to him by Mike Cronin for his thirty fifth anniversary here. So yes, that gets the most attention and the most questions, so.
It'd be nice to hang it on the wall somewhere.
It's incredibly heavy.
The gavel of Damocles.
Anyway, thank you to the teachers who we have as much fun doing it as they do, so I really appreciate it.
Great. Select Board reports, Gus?
Yeah, uh, let's see, let me go through, I actually got organized for this one here. So on Wednesday, May twenty fourth, I participated in, it was a Sierra Club webinar on electric school buses. And I didn't see anybody on the participant list that I recognized. And I actually, I think, I think somewhere in my email I have a recording of it and if I will, I'll forward it to Hillie. It was an interesting thing because they talked about the various federal funding programs for school buses, for one thing. And it was pretty clear that the funding, the criteria they have for funding of the electric school buses, supplemental funding, is really geared toward communities that are either economically more in need or where they thought they could have the biggest impact, which generally speaking would be a community that's more like a city like community where there's a lot of people. So I, I didn't come away with the impression that we would be a likely recipient, at least in the foreseeable future, for electric school bus grants. The other thing that they had in the, in the presentation was actually a presentation by, wasn't the town administrator from Quincy, but it was one of the town officials of Quincy who has taken advantage of this. But the interesting piece about it was that they were talking about how in Quincy, this whole idea of building, of going to this oftentimes requires a gradual process. For one thing, because the buses are so expensive, so if you're not getting gobs of federal money, you can't afford these things. And the, the infrastructure costs are part of it as well. But in the case of Quincy, their, their problem was Quincy is a fairly low lying community. And they need to be able to store electric school buses somewhere that won't flood. And they had like one hill and the hill would fit like four buses. So it was just interesting to realize that Quincy's decision about, you know, switching to electric school buses was actually rated by its ability to park the buses in a place that wouldn't be flooded. So I thought that was sort of interesting. And so anyway, that was interesting. On the thirty first, I had a phone call with Robert Kearns from the Charles River Watershed Association and Jen Ryan, who's also from the Charles River Watershed Association, but also associated with the, the Community Preservation Act advocacy. I think she said steering committee, so she's both Charles River and a steering committee. This was a follow up if we, what, two or three meetings ago when we had the folks come and talk and I, I asked a number of questions. And I said, listen, maybe the, maybe the C P A is different than what I thought it was originally. And they said, we'd be happy to talk with them. They followed up and that's what the call was about. I actually came out of that call thinking that we should take another look at the Community Preservation Act. They indicated that some things about the C P A had changed. Originally, I think the argument, and I might have been on the warrant committee when it first came up, had to do with the fact that the mandatory, the mandatory categories that you put money into would have basically pre reserved the thirty percent match that the state was providing. So basically you were getting locked into doing things this way. And the state was giving you a match, but the match was going to the mandated state, state categories, whether you needed it or not. This time around, as they explained it to me, there is more flexibility in those categories in terms of what you. I've only known what they told me, Mark. That there was more flexibility around what you could spend money on. Partly, part of this was that for some of the open space stuff, resiliency type stuff, projects would pass. I said, what about roof, solar panels on roofs and they, or solar, uh, not on roofs. Cause that might pass on town, you might be able to use it for town property. I said, what about solar panels on a, on a cap, you know, dump? They said, no, because there's no town asset that you're actually adding them to. So that doesn't work for getting solar panels in a solar farm down the road here, but it could potentially do some other things. So they, according to what they told me, Mark, there were some possible things you could do, use these things for. Interestingly, for some of the housing things, it wasn't clear, but you might even be able to use it to help people with housing costs. Bottom line for me was they added enough possibilities that I changed my view about being forced to put money into certain categories that were, like affordable housing. I'm saying, oh, we don't need to put money into affordable housing. But if you can put money into that affordable housing category that could be used to help people who have houses, you know, so it's a broader application for making things, I'd at least think it's worth looking at. Personally, if we look at it, there were two questions I had, where I said, well, if you're gonna, it can be usually one percent to three percent surcharge. And I said, well, if it makes sense, wouldn't you automatically go to the three percent surcharge? Because if this is a good deal at one percent, it's three times as good a deal at three percent.
It's even, it's even better than three times.
Unless you're generating so much money with that, that you're actually creating a pool of funds that's greater than the pool of funds you would otherwise have put in as a budget. My view is if we were to do it, and I think it is worth looking at it again, is that if we were to put an article to have this adopted, we should put a companion article for a Prop two and a half underwrite for the amount that we expect to raise with this increase. So based in, the town can either pass both of it, in which case all we've done is reconfigured our stat, our tax structure to take advantage of the matching funds without impacting the overall impact on, on taxes of the, of the town. Or the town can tell us, no, we're okay to be taxed more, so we don't want the underwrite, we want to keep it where it's at. And we still want the C P A. And if, if people in town say we want more taxes, and they might, some, there are some people in town that are pretty casual about taxes. But if, I think that's important to give them a choice. And then unless, unless that amount that we set aside literally draws money away from other parts of the budget, because we don't put that much money into these categories until we do this, then I'd say, look at the details, make sure it really does make sense. I think it might be time to take another look at this. So that is a position change that I've, from where I've been probably for six years.
So do you want to have any comments on the C P A or not?
That would be something we would bring up at town meeting next year, right?
Well, I think you, I think, I suspect we have some people here in town who'd be quite happy to help us take a look at this.
Yes.
So I think you have to take an honest look at it and come up with a plan of what you want to do. But as far as I'm concerned, yeah, if it's, you know, there's no reason why if we know we want to do it now, it would seem to me as a reasonable timeframe to look at it between, by now to be able to make a decision on it for next year's town meeting, so.
So my analysis of the C P A has always been that it's a, it's a way to save money on your taxes because you get the state matching money. And, and there's no reason to do it unless you're already spending the money in the three categories that the state mandates you to spend money on. We've always spent money in those three categories. You look at the open space and recreation plan, they had an itemization of like twelve or fifteen items that we've spent money on in the, in the past several years that would fall into those categories. The other thing that I, I think I learned from Mark was that the, if you, if you go in at the three percent level, it's not just three times the money that you get at the one percent level because the state match goes up.
Right.
There's, there's specials.
The state has not been in a hundred percent match now for a number of years. However, if you're at three percent, there are additional distributions, two, two additional distributions that are made after the basic distribution. And the, the money that the town receives, because of that, that delta is significant. I forget, Midway got an additional sixty or eighty thousand dollars, I think.
Mark is, is very well versed in this because he serves on the C P A committee. You're the chair of the committee in Midway?
The other point that was made, at least in the phone call I had, was that while the state has not reliably reimbursed at thirty percent initially, initially, I guess first years, the towns that did it together was a hundred percent. There are a hundred ninety five towns that have actually adopted it in the state. So as that has increased, the state actually threw extra money during COVID in. And I think the reimbursement might have been like forty percent last year or something like that.
They increased the formula. And then the last several years, if there's been a surplus in the budget, they've injected additional hundred million, two hundred million.
So that, so that apparently on a, on a one off basis, that was something like forty percent reimbursement.
Right.
But what they told me, at least on the phone call, was that the state and the legislature, I guess, has a, seems to have a renewed commitment to maintaining, now that they see so many towns that have done this, the legislature seems to have a renewed commitment to maintaining that thirty percent reimbursement and doing what's necessary to make that feasible. So it seemed like a lot of the winds were blowing in the positive direction. I still think you need to look at it. I agree with everything you said, Pete, except for the fact that you have to address the fact that this is a new tax, unless you figure out how to offset it by offsetting if the taxpayers care. If they don't care, then that's a different.
Well, it is, it is, it's, you, you tax yourself more now to save, to get the state match and save money in the long run. But some people will just see it as another pool of money that we're going to spend and object to it on that basis.
Don't, you do get, because you have a state match, that's an incentive. But I'm saying offset the taxes that are not inside the C P A.
Yep.
By the amount that you expect to be collecting from the C P A. And then it's a sort of tax neutral decision that sets you up for reimbursement, so long as you're not putting more money into those buckets than you would have spent anyway.
Well, the critical thing to understand is it's not increase in the tax rate, it's a surcharge on the taxes. So it's a watered down, it's relatively small amount, even at three percent. And given your first hundred thousand evaluations exempt, and then you figure it based on your other evaluation, you figure how much and then you multiply it times the tax rate and come up with a calculation.
And it seems that most towns, they exempt the first hundred thousand evaluation of the house. But my view is that's a ploy to get the votes to pass it. But that's how we can, that's a decision that's sort of a tactical decision. Mark, I think you said the tax rate doesn't change, which is true. Your taxes go up because, by the surcharge, unless you offset the taxes by an underwrite if people want that.
They do, but all I'm saying is people tend to misunderstand and make the adjustment on the underlying tax rate and come up with a way bigger figure than what really happens here, the mechanism here, because it's on top, it's a surcharge.
I, I understand.
Only a percentage.
Yep. Saturday, June third, went to the Medfield High School graduation and you'll probably have more to say. It was good, it was a good, um, at the end, I was talking to Jeff Morrisson and Mr. Paria. And one of the comments that came out of, and actually Tim Knight as well, in fact, Tim's the one that made the comment. He said, you know, every year we graduate a group of students that, you look at them, they're just fundamentally decent young adults. And sometimes we don't acknowledge that. And I think, you know, I, I agreed with Tim's comment, I, I feel that way every year. He articulated it and I think that this, this year's class absolutely conveyed that. However, however perfectly or imperfectly we educate everybody who comes through our schools, we pretty consistently graduate young adults who are decent. One of the comments that was made during the graduation is they're all polite, which that's actually probably a noteworthy characteristic of young adults in most towns around here. Not around here, but in general. But if you look at them, there's a decency that I think everybody that's associated with educating and, and raising kids in this town can take pride in. Next, we had Monday on the fifth of June, I attended, or I, I logged in to the MMA webinar, which I sent you guys all the recordings. So if you did, this is the Baron, the Kalenda case, which.
South Borough.
The South Borough case. For anybody who has a tolerance to read a court, a court, you know, decision, I found that court decision to be absolutely fascinating reading. I actually agreed with what they came up with and it had to do with the fact they were harking back, harkening back to the history of this country that involves somewhat contentious debates in public meetings. And it, it got shot, the plaintiffs got upheld for that reason. Having said that, then watching this, MMA is doing two webinars. This is the one that was on the, the lessons learned. And then there's a second one next Monday on de escalation techniques in public meetings. Lessons learned, these are important, you, you can set time limits on public comment, so that is in fact allowed. If you're setting a time, this is one I hadn't thought of, if you're setting a time limit on speakers, you have to oppose it across the board, impose it across the board. So in our view, usually we don't put time limits on any, but I still think we, we keep doing what we're doing. But the point is, if you're gonna have time limits, you kind of have to hold people to that time limit or else somebody can claim you were biased in terms of who you let talk and who you didn't.
Scott does a really good job. Scott doesn't play favorites to anybody at town meeting, he's pretty.
It's not clear actually that it applies to town meeting. Town meeting has the whole amount of case law.
But he's just good about it, he says everyone's two minutes, he, he's good about it.
But I, what I learned from that was, well, gee, I don't think we would ever have a time limit. I actually think the only time we'd ever have to get to a time limit is we had a whole bunch of people who all wanted to say something about the same issues. And they were all saying the same thing and they've been saying it for a while. We would probably say, listen, from here forward, we're gonna have a time limit, but then you have to enforce it and it's good to know. You can adopt rules preventing speakers from disrupting others. So this whole issue of the case was around a contentious exchange between a citizen and the acting chair of the, of the select board, which by our standards, I thought it was a pretty benign conversation that should never have created the problem. We have, I was thinking of you, Pete, after we made the, the police chief decision. I saw you weather some direct criticism that was, this stuff pale in comparison to that, Pete. I was proud of you for what you did there without.
Criticism, I missed that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How outrageous.
Yep. You can require speech to be peaceable and orderly. Which is interesting, but they, they hedged on what peaceable and orderly actually means.
Begging the question.
Yeah, well, but.
It's like fighting words, you know, it's the same kind of thing. Fighting words are not protected, but what a fighting word.
Yeah, and then you can restrict subjects for discussion so long as there are other opportunities. This was a part, so in other words, if somebody wants to come in and talk about something, you actually can cut them off in a meeting. Like they'll say, no, we're not talking about that, so long as there's some other opportunity that people have to voice that issue, talk about that issue. So those I just thought were sort of interesting things that came out. And I think that was.
Was it Attorney John Davis?
Yes. He, I self identified as the losing attorney in the case, so he did get credit. He got credit from me for that one.
Very capable defense lawyer, insurance defense lawyer.
Yeah, I, I just, if you watch the video, and if you watch the video of the school, of the, the actual meeting, which they had, I have to tell you for the way that we run meetings, I don't think we would have ever gotten to that kind of a conversation. Part, not because we wouldn't have heard some of the comments made, but because we wouldn't have reacted to it the same way. But I am looking forward to the de escalation techniques. And the other piece is, in that situation, even though it was contentious, the woman who was challenging the select board, it was a good faith discussion. I think when you get people who are deliberately coming in as political demonstrators trying to disrupt a meeting, that's a whole other sphere which we fortunately are spared from. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Memorial Day Parade, Pete, you and I had a chance to march in that with Becca Roche. Beautiful day, good turnout.
Nice event.
Yeah, nice event, they did a really nice job. The young man that, that read the Gettysburg Address and the speakers were fantastic. Graduation is passed Saturday.
That speaker was really good, wasn't he?
Yeah, and I, I.
I thought he was excellent.
Blank on his name. Graduation was nice, a little windy, a little chilly. First time they've had it on a Saturday, as long as I can remember. So I think that's smart, I get why they did it. Then they were able to do the all night graduation and had leisure, not leisurely time, but they could get things taken care of on Sunday. So I totally get that, but that was great. The speeches were fantastic and, you know, Gus, to what you were saying, I mean, every year, the, the kids, whether it's the, the arts and the music and the, the athletes, where, when you read, one of the young men that got up and spoke, he talked about the Instagram page that he created. And you can go to Medfield Futures and you can see where the kids that wanted to post, where they're going, what school, what they're gonna major in. It's impressive. You know, they've, they've got kids going all over the country, just, just, it was a really good day. Very happy for the, the administration and for the parents and families. I've got a Affordable Housing Trust meeting this Thursday. We bumped last Thursday's meeting to this coming Thursday. And I think we'll be discussing the progress that's being made over at four forty one. And the Eagle Scout ceremony is coming up this Saturday for Parker Kilmer. Do we, will we sign the, the certificate as of tonight's meeting or, okay, okay, let me show. And then I have a silly question to ask, and I think I asked Georgia this about a year ago. But when people go online to pay their bills in Medfield, like I pay a ton of stuff online and I never have a fee to pay, but when you go.
You do, it's just baked in and you don't see it. We have, we have to list it out separately.
Okay, so that's why when you go in, you're getting hit with, whether it be fifty cents or something astronomical.
Cities and towns, municipalities are not allowed to absorb that fee. We can't pay that fee that the credit card chom, credit card company charges us. Because if Pete chooses to pay by cash, you're getting a benefit that he's not. So when you pay for anything, when you pay at a restaurant, when you pay at a credit card, that credit card fee is baked into the cost of what you're eating. We have to be open and transparent and can't, we have to list that fee separately.
So that's why even electronic transfers from bank accounts, the bank's gonna.
Yep, the bank charges us that fee and we can't pay for it. Nope, nope, we're not allowed to, we're not allowed to budget for that or absorb those costs.
It's still a good deal as long as.
It's still a good deal as long as stamps are at 58 cents.
I just dropped it off with Susan tonight, and I'm like, oh, I know I'm going to see her on Tuesday night.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't, we can't subsidize your choice to do that versus somebody else's, yeah.
Just a silly question, I think Georgia told, I knew I asked that question about a year ago, but, okay. Anyone who's watching, now you know why you're getting paid with a little fee.
Yep.
If people aren't doing it, it's a great way to pay your bills to the town. It's cost 50 cents to pay my taxes every time I do that, so.
Well, it depends on how you pay.
Well, yeah, that's why I pay with the 50, with a bank account instead of a credit card.
We'll take your money anyway, just for the record, if anybody's watching, we'll take it whatever way you'd like to give it to us.
I'm sure you will. And that'd be that.
Okay, I had some office hours of the first Friday of every month, and I had a man come in to see me who lives at the corner of Dale and West Street, and he, there was a hole at the intersection, and he actually sent me four pictures. I sent them along to Mo Goulet, the director of the DPW, and I actually took a look at the, at the site this morning, and it's because the school buses turned the corner coming up from Dale, from Memorial School, and they turned the corner onto West Street, and so that they, because it's a sharp corner.
Is it Dale or Adams?
They're coming up Adams, I'm sorry. They're coming up Adams.
Because I saw them working on it this morning, that's why I say that.
And so this morning, there was actually a big hole. It was, it was pretty, it was like six inches deep, it was pretty, and it's on the other side of a drain grate.
So the DPW is there literally working on it today?
Oh, yeah, well, wait, the, Mo said that he'd take a look at it, he was very responsive to the, to the man, so it was wonderful. And then I had this woman, Jean Minio, showed up at my office hours to talk to me about something that she's doing up at the state hospital that we heard about tonight. I ended up loaning, I met a woman at Jean's event up at the state hospital a week or two ago who had something from the, she had a display from the Historical Society there, and I was looking at things that she had. She had the Boston Post Kane, and I'd never met this woman before. It's Peggy Sue Weatheran, Weather, well, I ended up loaning her a couple of my scanners. She has like 17,000, I think it's 17,000 or 17, it's a lot of cards. They keep track of everything that they have in the building on these index cards. I didn't know you could still buy index cards, but she, so she's going to scan them all. And so I gave her the scanners to do that with. I had a planning meeting with Chris and Frank and Brittany, and that's the reason we've got these meetings out through the end of the year now. We had a Medfield Foundation annual meeting last night. June meeting's always fun because we get dinner. And then my most fun, Gus, you'll like this, was on Sunday, I was going out for my sort of jog, and I was going up Hospital Road, coming towards the hospital, and around the corner, to the left is the, is the group home there, to the right is the Fields, and there's a horse running down Hospital Road with no rider. And I thought, well, this is bad.
Hopefully the rider was in second side of the road.
Coming up from the town, and there was actually a lot of traffic at the time.
I think of a horse that did that once.
And I guess what you, what you should know is that I have never been a successful horse rider like you. I find horses have never done what I've asked them to do when I've been sitting on them, so they basically are so much bigger than I am that they kind of scare me. But I stood in the middle of the road. And prevented the traffic from coming, and the horse saw me, and the horse went into the group home, and then they were able to get a bridle on it, and, because there's no out, once you go into the group home area, you can't get out of it, so.
How did the group home have a bridle? That's impressive.
All the people were chasing.
Oh, okay.
They were aware that their horse was on the roots.
Okay, okay.
They were in a car, actually.
Okay.
I think. So that's it. Anything else?
You have, you have two more, two more things. One, I, my teeth, my horse's teeth were floated today, so just, you know, that's when they, they literally take a file and grind the teeth down, and weirdly, horses don't mind having this big file in their mouth going along, so I had that done today. They only have to do it once a year, though, not twice a year, like I go to the dentist for. More importantly, for the first time in my life on Friday, I can't believe I forgot to mention this, I saw a piliated woodpecker in our yard. I heard this noise, I let the dog out, I hear this knock, 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 and I look up, I've heard them, if you go to Donely, if you don't know what a piliated woodpecker sounds like. It sounds like a jungle bird. You'll hear this bird in the woods, and you go, that, that has to be a jungle bird. And I've heard them over near Donely, and I've never seen one, and we had one, if anybody wants, I have pictures on my phone, and it just sat there, and it was just tearing away on this dead piece of this pine tree.
They're pretty, they're pretty rare around here.
Well, it's been, first time in my life I've ever seen a piliated woodpecker.
Maybe 10 years ago, there was a red-headed woodpecker.
Red-bellied woodpecker. Red-bellied woodpecker.
No, there was a red-headed woodpecker, the one that has the total redhead on the top.
That's a piliated.
And it was the only one in Massachusetts, so there were, there were people with these huge scopes down along the railroad tracks.
Really?
He was in the swamp area between 27 and the railroad tracks beyond Hospital Road.
That's a red-headed woodpecker, that's interesting, that's impressive.
Yeah, they said, they told me it was the only one in the state. So with that, are you ready to adjourn?
I don't know how to follow that up. All right. Shall we motion? To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.